Six o'clock, I call this meeting of the Proctor Select Board to order. Would you stand and join me in a moment of silence for Ben, our departed chairman? Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Review and approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Review and approve the minutes for February 12th.
I move that we approve the minutes of February 12th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approve the meeting of the minutes of the special select board meeting for the 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Public comment? John, did you hear say anything?
I think I'll wait till I listen to the highway department and honor the goons. Thank you.
Good stuff. It was a nice spring day and this week's looking good, so I'm ready for some good weather.
Girls' basketball teams in the playoffs?
Yes. I think they're on tomorrow night?
Wednesday night.
Wednesday. Anything else? Discussion on action items? Has everyone reviewed the bills and signed?
Yes.
Reprezal agreement with Tyler Technologies?
Yeah, she emailed me and is no longer, they're not ready to have it approved. She wants to meet next week for the town and kind of go over it. And she's also trying to tie in some of the other software just to see where we're at for a final account, so.
So hold on to those?
Yep, so we should have it for the next meeting then.
Great, thank you. Tax map update?
So we got a tax map maintenance, and this is when properties exchange hands in the town and they go to, they're either sold or transferred. Then this company updates the tax map so that when people go online, they can see who owns which properties. So the only difference is last year, when they did the agreement, the contract, it was $1,100 and then $15 per change. This year, it's $1,200 with $20 per change, so. So I'm just looking to kind of have, you know, approval on that.
Motion to approve the...
I just ask one question on that before we do.
Mm-hmm.
You know, on that, where they say that, you know, the expense is $20 per building or updating per building, you know, on the first page, the compilations, you know, are those included in that cost? Or are those, I mean, included in the $1,200 cost or are they separate for?
Are you looking at all of those under the compilation or?
Yes.
I think with the $20, it's when something is, so if someone were to, if you had a piece of property and it was on the tax map and someone built a building on it, a new building on it?
Or a new footprint, yes.
Right, then that $20 would be an additional charge. Otherwise, it's just kind of random exchanges and stuff. But if it's a major change to a property, then they charge you that $20. And we don't have a lot of major changes.
Yeah, no.
So it's more transfers if anything.
But like on that compilations, they talk about shall review information from the previous tax year regarding problem areas and shall attempt to resolve, you know, any discrepancies. I didn't know if that was included in the $1,200 fee.
Yeah, that's part of the blanket cost, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Move to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I have the original here, so I'll have you all sign this, so I'll just pass it around. Just make sure you sign it before we go.
Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Greg.
First of all, I'm sorry to interrupt your chair. I'm here to talk about the regional plan that's coming in 2026. We're currently rewriting the region's plan. This encompasses all of Rutland County except for Pittsfield. So it functions similarly to a town plan, except the scope is larger. So this is all the towns that the Rutland Regional Plan Commission works with. So similar to a town plan, this is a visiting document for the region, which will be published in 2026 and then will serve through 2034. And these are updated every eight years, but we are completely rewriting it for this iteration. So it's a larger amount of work in the part of the planning commission, and we're hoping to get as much input as possible from the communities. So we have a survey that we've sent out beginning of January. Apparently, we have 16 responses for Proctor. We're hoping for at least 13 more, which would be what our goal is for Proctor, but if we could get even more than that, that would be amazing. So if you haven't taken the survey already, we urge you to take it if you have time at some point. It's on our website, it should be easy to find, and it doesn't take more than 15 minutes, so really appreciate your time for that.
They're also having those pop up, events, right, that pertain to this?
Yes, yeah, so we've had events throughout the region. We're trying to have one in every town eventually, and what we do is those through the end of March.
The one in Proctor is this Wednesday at 4:00 PM at Franklin's. So they thought they'd do it because it's senior citizen dinner. So they thought they'd go there and have, you know, information, see if anybody has input, questions, things like that, so.
Yeah, I'm not actually sure who's going to be there. I'm not going to be there, but I think there'll be one or two of us there.
Right. Yeah, Stephanie's the one that told me about it and then invited me, so.
Where was that advertised?
I think on their website. I only found out about it today when she invited me.
And it's Wednesday?
Yes, 4:00 PM.
Okay.
They started, my thought was when they originated, like, they were asking places to go, so she must have dealt directly with Franklin's about having it there, so.
Okay, it just seems like a very particular population that you're going to be addressing on Wednesday evening, and secondly, it's odd to me that it hasn't been advertised any place in town.
I think that our involvement in any of these events is, there are a few that we're putting on ourselves entirely, but otherwise, it's kind of Stephanie reaching out and seeing if we can set up a table at a public event. And it's mostly, you know, her research into, you know, what events we could be a part of without being intrusive.
Did the planning commission advertise anywhere other than on the website with this survey?
So we, I'm talking ahead, I know that we're trying to get as many front porch forums as possible, as well as pushing it out through Facebook and, you know, any, they're going any and all avenues that we can reach people, we're trying to reach people.
Okay.
So that's both in person, like, community events, and by me being here asking you all to push it out further beyond what we might have than our reach, and then also looking at, you know, various avenues on social media.
Right. Because I wasn't aware of it until today, and when I went to the other meetings, there was like a list of who had volunteered to host these sites, and Proctor wasn't one of them. So I was kind of, didn't know how that was arranged, if it was just arranged directly through Franklin's and...
I think that it would have been Stephanie reaching out directly to them.
Okay.
And, I mean, at first, it wasn't a part of finding out which events we're going to, but I think it's mostly about whatever venue agreed to host us and also whatever venues we wouldn't be intruding upon an actual event by being a part of.
Okay.
Some people, we asked them, and they said, no, we don't really want you to be part of this.
Right, okay.
Did you get ahold of Elsie Molloy?
No.
Yeah, she's the head of the...
Well, I'm assuming, I don't know if she just dealt directly with Frank or if actually it was the group that organizes it, because I didn't know anything about it until, like I said, today inviting me to it, so. But I can reach out, I mean, I'm sure she knows about it, but I'll reach out to touch base, make sure she's...
Yeah.
Because then she could maybe get more people to go or something, you know?
Yeah, everything is, that's everything, you know, as far as people going for that, it's, that's all set up on Monday.
Okay.
By today, you know, we have to let them know.
Right, yeah. And I think it's more or less like, you know, they go for dinner and then they're going to have a table set up and then they'll do, you know, talking questions and maybe ask people, you know, different things.
Yeah.
Just to kind of get some feedback from them.
Yeah, it's pretty much along those lines, a table for more people on the side of the actual event.
Yeah, and actually, I think she even indexed cards maybe on the table, so they wanted to write, so if they didn't have anything to ask then or something they could down the road, so.
Yeah, we're trying to give people a lot of room to give direct feedback at those events, but also really try and correct people to take this shorter survey, because that's, we have, you know, standard questions that we have a range of answers and responses to, which is easier to work with later on. We're trying to figure out what the greater opinions of the region are on different, you know, many issues and development issues.
Right.
If there's a platform or a newsletter in Proctor that we could further push the survey out, I'd really appreciate it.
Well, can we copy the link?
Oh, definitely.
So if we copy and paste the link on our page, people can open it there?
Yeah, that would be really helpful. I can give you...
Okay.
And I have taken the survey and it's not, you know, it's not intrusive, it's not like, it's brief, but it also allows you personally to put in your input on what you'd like to see, so.
Yeah, it's on YouTube, so. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Regional ambulance service appointment request?
Yes, so we got a request from the regional ambulance service that the person who was on there previously, their term is up, and we're looking for another representative. And I reached out to the fire department because it was a prior fire, fire before, and he offered up Kevin Blongi. Kevin was okay with it if you want to approve him.
I'll make the motion that we ask Kevin Blongi to be our representative to regional ambulance.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kevin. The bus, Marble Valley Regional Transit.
So I received an email from Rutland Regional Planning that they need municipal representatives for the Marble Valley Regional Transit District for the bus for their board. And if you have anybody you think would be interested or wants to join the board, then I can offer them up a name and connect them, so. I didn't know if anyone here did or if you were aware of anybody else, but I can go to other committees and just put it out there if people wanted to volunteer.
It would be nice if we could find somebody that rides the bus, but I don't know of anyone.
No.
They're kind of looking for like, if somebody were on like, our board, obviously, or like, planning commission, any of the committees in town that, you know, they're already involved in the town, so I don't know.
Because it's 10:00 AM, you know, I'll be an alternate. I won't be the regular, but if you need an alternate.
Okay.
Who's going to be on the website?
Where do you put it on the website because you don't appoint till next week?
Right, right.
And just as a point, I think Raymond has been like the permanent, so I...
Yeah, I think that was the way it was listed in one of the town reports recently.
I don't know if he hasn't been able to attend or he hasn't, but there might be a need or conversation, there might be appropriate or a thank you note or something.
Yeah, would you talk to him, Judy?
Mm-hmm.
I know he hasn't been filling in.
Yeah. I can also ask other committee members too, you know, that we have, but I'll ask him first. Thank you, Albert.
Asbestos contract for the property out on West Street?
So because the state hasn't, they basically stopped being involved in that whole process, I reached out to one of the contractors who does asbestos reporting. So I reached out to him and he was interested, he said he could do it. He kind of went through the whole idea of how they go through the process, where they look for the testing they do, and it's pretty, you know, extensive. And I believe the fee that he said he would charge was $1,500 for the initial report. So I just wanted to get the board's approval to go forward with him, at least to get that part done. The property's becoming more and more of a problem. I've heard that stuff's being brought over there. We don't know what it is, whether it's garbage, clothes or what, and being thrown into the shed. You know, there's a vehicle now on top of it. The place is just coming down even more so. So if we could at least get this report done and see, because if there is no asbestos, it's going to be a much easier cleanup than if there's asbestos, so.
Where's this fellow out of?
This one right here is out of Randolph. Oh, I'm sorry, it's Francis Finnegan.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because a lot of them are out of state and way out of the territory, so I tried to get somebody that's a little closer.
Yeah.
He was very...
We worked with Aldis from out of Burlington up at the church. So I don't know.
And I can also call that, I mean, I can call another one just to see prices.
Yeah, it might be good just to get a second one for comparison.
Yep.
But we definitely do need it to move forward.
Yeah.
Yes, I agree.
We just can't do nothing.
Definitely.
And then we have to worry about the neighbors, you know, that airborne stuff, not that it probably gets thick enough in the air. To move forward, we've got to know.
Right, okay.
Why are we getting involved in this now? This one I don't like.
Well, it's...
I know what you're talking about, I know what you're, I'm just saying, well, maybe you should help me if I ask us this in the house. You know, it's... There's more to it than why we are doing this.
Public safety, John.
Yes. The neighbors...
Everybody has to pay for this, there's no free asbestos removal.
Are we in the real estate business though?
No.
I believe we will be with that lot eventually.
Yes.
So I believe we'll own it eventually.
But...
Would you be happy to the taxpayers decide on that?
That's what we do, John. We represent the taxpayers.
Should we bring it up?
No, we're not going to bring that up.
For $1,200?
No.
I don't think so, John, I wouldn't bother them with that.
No. That's what we do.
Actually, I think that's a very good price.
I'm not saying it isn't, but I'm just saying, we're supposed to be saving money in the town.
Well, there isn't any way to save.
That's what we're trying to do here. Yep, and we're...
They have to be certified.
You know, and to clean up a hazard, I don't think that's a terrible price.
And it has to go to a certain place to be disposed of.
Maybe there's none there, maybe we'll get lucky.
Right now, we're only talking about testing to see if it's there.
If there is any there, right.
Yes. Not the abatement or...
Right.
No, this is... Just to see if the hazard exists.
Can we adjourn the board of select board and move into the water commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we're in the board of water commissioners.
So I've been working with the town clerk and the public works, and we've been discussing about April shut offs because April's coming up pretty quick. So we're going to be running delinquent reports to see where everyone's at and then kind of prioritize where those shut offs have to happen.
Good, good. You know, staying after this for a few years, it's coming down and...
Yeah.
Any other business for water commissioners?
Will it be any, any property that's delinquent in town?
Well, a certain level, depends how delinquent they are, we take the highest ones.
Like, one year, we usually don't worry about.
Right.
We give them a year or two.
Tom, is that water safe to drink?
We passed all the state tests, John, I drank it.
I haven't seen nothing from the state, and the town manager told me the last time I was there, it comes out the first of the year. Well, first of the year is...
I thought it came out last fall, I thought I got a copy of it.
It usually comes out first of the year.
No, I didn't say it came out the first of the year, I said it comes out once a year.
I don't remember coming out first of the year, John.
And they test...
I haven't seen nothing from the state.
They test the water continuously and it's been, the reports that have come back, it's been fine.
I drink that water every day.
The report that they issue that we send out to all the residents, that doesn't come out until later.
Just asking.
Well, check your mail, John. Okay, can we move to the board of sewer commissioners?
So moved.
So I gave everyone a copy of the sludge management plan approval, which it's actually thicker with going into all the verbiage, but this is the main part of the contract showing you when it has to be, you know, the frequency for testing, for sludge removal. And right now, currently, we're doing the exact same thing as this current plan shows. It doesn't really go into extensive removal or change, testing unless it's being removed. Otherwise, depending on the amount of the sludge and the, that what's been disposed of, if it's a, you know, a certain level, then you have to test it more often. But right now, it's only once a year that we're doing it. And actually, the sludge, the last time when they started the original asset management plan, the sludge was estimated to be higher. When they did the actual testing, we have much less sludge than they had anticipated, so. So we're at a good point in terms of that, so.
Good, good, good. And, you know, this is an ongoing thing, so we'll get those cleaned up.
Now, with that plan, you know, they CC'd it to you, Judy, and then they also CC'd it to Christopher Hayes, operator, Simon Operations Services.
Right, that was inaccurate.
Yeah, I was going to say.
They had Simon still down.
Operation director, right?
Yeah, but we notified them and told them that we're doing it.
Yeah.
Good pick up, Albert.
Yeah, because I saw it, I was like, why are they copying you?
Yeah. They don't talk to each other up there.
No, they don't.
Any other business or...
One item. It probably should have came under the other action items.
Just a minute, John, go ahead, Albert.
You know, I was just wondering about the swimming pool reconnect to the sewer line. Would that be completed by the time the pool opens, do you think?
Yeah, they're doing it in spring.
Okay.
Yeah.
John?
With this story with the sludge, we have to respond to you.
And we have started, this is the start of basically the process of getting the lagoons re-lined, the sludge removed.
And some other equipment replaced at the sewer plant.
Updating.
Nothing out of bounds, as far as my concern. It's just that it hasn't been taken care of right. That's my feeling, but I'm just curious, have you come up with a figure or anything? A ballpark figure or?
Yes, we've applied for, to the state for some, and we've had engineers working on the cost. I believe it was, what, $5.4 million?
Yep.
It'd be more than that, it'd be almost six, over $6 million.
Oh, I'm glad that you gave your approval.
You know, this should have been started years ago, John, but it wasn't, so now we'll do it.
Don't say nothing, I've been up this state, I've been up here.
Good. All right, can we go back to the, move back to the regular select board?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Department report, sheriff's report. New ones are a little different than the old ones, but...
Yes.
But this one did print out the hours that, Albert, that you...
I noticed, but I lost them on the front side. I wasn't going to say anything, but no, the report is, it's a good report.
Yeah, I don't know why they changed formats.
Yeah, but it's a good report, you know, I didn't see anything there that got my attention.
Right.
No, and...
They've been great at communicating with me too, with, you know, the whole incident on Friday and stuff, contacting me even at night, reaching out to us, saying if there's anything they can do for us, just to let us know, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
Anything else for sheriffs? Public Works report.
I know, I think it's very complete and gives us an idea of what's happening daily and...
He doesn't, he tells us everything that's going on, that's for sure.
Yeah.
And Judy, if you'd mentioned to Kyle, I'm sure he's already thought of it, but, you know, we might want to start slacking off a bit on our salt deliveries.
Yeah. Right, right.
They've been pretty, we had good luck this winter with the salt.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been pretty lucky this winter with everything.
Okay, anything else? Public Works or Town Manager?
So Green Mountain Power was contacted because there was a leaning pole down off Pleasant Street. They've anchored it and staked it for a new pole to be placed there. I haven't been by there this week, but they're putting a rush on it to try to get it done within two weeks because it was, I think, further out. And then in the interim, they were reconnecting service to a pole near the ball field for certain individuals so that there would be no disruption, so. Because I called them once because it looked like the, if the pole fell, that it would fall across the tracks. So they had already had it anchored at that time, but they went back and anchored it better, so.
Okay, so that's way in the north end of Pleasant, where there's like...
Yeah, it's right after you go under the trestle, like, right if you're under it, almost, you look to the left and it's right there. Yeah, and they were down, like, right when I called, I saw the trucks, they went down there immediately, so.
Good.
Kyle and I had a Zoom meeting with Benjamin Green from the state of Vermont regarding the dams in Proctor. They did rapid investigations after the big storm in the summer, which I questioned why we never got them. So they did send them to me and they basically, they're very vague, they did like 400 inspections within two week period. So they just did kind of went real quick to make sure water wasn't overflowing, things like that. So they said, we were complaining about the dams and the reports and where the league stands on those, so they are going to send down... So they are gonna, um, send down, um, engineers and they put us on the schedule for early spring. It wasn't supposed to be till much later. So they're gonna come down early spring and, um, perhaps with an engineer and go over the inspections and the feasibility study, so. One was started at one point, I want to say four years ago, and then it just kind of.
Yeah.
Fell, so.
Now, what about the insurance with that, whether it was?
We're still, we're covered for this year? Yep. In fact, I just got the endorsement from them with all three dams on it, so. Met with a forester on Thursday, um, Albert was here as well. We're both forest experts now because he was very, very detailed. Um, talked about the Chittenden Timberlot and after talking about that, um, he talked about the road that should be built and the fact that, um, you know, it, it is, you could get in there without a road being built as, if a contractor has a skid and can get up in there and stuff. It's just the cost goes up once a skidder goes in because the longer the road with just a truck, it's cheaper than a long road with a skid taking all the logs out. So he mentioned the property that we own on Florence Road and that timber lot and said that that isn't under the timber management plan. So his suggestion, which Albert and I thought was a good suggestion, is cutting that lot earlier first and then the proceeds that we get from there put towards building a road in Chittenden so it doesn't impact our budget, you know, with that. Whereas the other one, the one in Chittenden is tied to the water, you know, department, so you can't do anything with that.
It's a good idea.
So, so he's meeting, he said the contract for, um, Chittenden was never signed in 2020. Um, and he said it's rare and unusual that that would ever happen, but he says it's because of COVID maybe. Um, but neither party signed it. So he said they're just drafting that to get the signatures through. But that's for the Chittenden piece, this piece over here should be fine. And once he gets the markings, he's gonna go out there and check the trees and what, what could be cut. But he said it's much easier to get to the, this lot here than it is the one in Chittenden, so. Um, posted the bid advertisement for South Street Sidewalk today in the Rutland Herald. It'll be posted, um, for the next three consecutive Wednesdays. It'll be posted on our website and then they'll be posting it as well. So, um, and then we'll have a pre-bid meeting and then when the bids come in, we'll open them immediately that day and then it'll come to the board on the 26th of March for approval. Um, we're looking at getting paving bids out earlier this year, hopefully sometime in April. Um, we had one of our employees that resigned last week to take another position. So, um, that was Matt Resendezki, so his last day was Friday. Let's see, water, wastewater, we touched on those already regarding the sludge and the delinquent charges.
What's your plan for the open slot?
Um, we've talked briefly about it with Public Works and we are not certain if we're gonna fill it right now.
Good.
Or hold off, so we're gonna kind of look at different avenues, so.
Good, good, that's good.
Um, I had a Crete meeting, which is for the Chittenden Dam, and they're still creating the revised maps to include both Proctor and West Rutland. Apparently that dam is also up in the, up at the State House. They're really coming down hard on all the dams and what they think their capability is and kind of leaning towards that whole, um, hydro power and almost taking that off, you know, having that not be one of the considered, the strongest power things and are these dams even safe to do that and all this, so. They're really getting into the weeds with this stuff, so, but. So I'll keep you updated on that if we hear anything. Um, I had mentioned about Bob Ferguson with the phone changeover, which would be really nice to do, I think, and just, these phones are, I mean, we're getting phone calls and voicemail messages and not getting the messages for like eight hours later.
I thought you were moving forward with that.
Yeah, yeah, well, he had to come back to me with a spreadsheet and stuff, so Celia and I are going over it just to make sure the cost. And I told him maybe the best place to go first would be the wastewater plant to test that, to make sure there's no disruptions with the changeover and things like that, so. Um, but I think it's, it's definitely gonna save us some money and just be much, much better, you know, um, technology for us.
Yeah.
And I shared the letter with you from the Tax Department for the reappraisals. And it's weird, they sent that out to the Select Board and they sent it to the Highway Department. I have no idea why.
Yeah.
So, and it was in a mailbox like for quite a while, so I don't know why they sent it to them.
It doesn't say much, really.
No, it doesn't. So just kind of reiterating on the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and their POP event at Franklin's. And then March 2nd, there's also a breakfast at Franklin's with, um, all the local reps for our area that are gonna be there to talk about different things and what's happening up at the legislature, so. If anybody's interested, it's free, the breakfast. Sponsored by Judy Turnavage.
When is that?
March 2nd, I believe it starts at nine.
Nine o'clock.
She's sending me the thing so I can post it on the website, but there is a posting downstairs.
I think we all signed up, Judy. Any new or old or other business needs to be discussed?
Tom, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Last year it was on the ballot that we took money from the town office to do this and now it's back on the ballot this year.
Took money from the town office to do what, John?
On that thing that we voted last year. We had money left over from the town office, we voted on at town meeting. And now you got it in there.
Money from the municipal building fund to build the road in Chittenden.
Okay.
Now you got it back on, going back to the town office.
Okay.
So what's the reason?
Well, we didn't use it.
You didn't use it?
Right, we didn't, we didn't build the road in Chittenden, did we? No.
Just asking.
Okay, yeah. No, we thought that was the right thing to do, John, you'll put it back. We, you know, we could have kept it, I guess.
Well, people are gonna have, I mean, I'm curious why it went this way and didn't come back.
Well, because we didn't get the road built, you know? And we didn't think it was right to keep it there doing nothing.
When the building, when this building was reconstructed and they did the remodeling, there were certain things in the plans that weren't done. So we'd like to put the money back so it can be done. And then the road, we were told at the time that there was no construction, um, contractors that would be willing probably to go in, skid, log, and try to clear a road as they went, and we found out that's not the case. There are contractors that are willing to do that. And if we do need the road, then we have another way of, means of getting it from this other timber lot that won't impact the budget and can be used for that, so. That was the purpose behind it.
So are we gonna, any, gonna have to do grants or not?
Um, well, yes, we, you know, with the sewer plant, we'll certainly be going after some grants there.
Specifically for?
What particular project?
Well, there's a lot of grants out there, West Rutland's getting them left to right.
Yeah, what, what project do we have to?
Well, I'm just asking you, I mean, are you gonna ask any grant thing? Anytime somebody's giving you this money, you should go after it.
You don't, you don't get grant money unless you have a project.
Project.
Need a project.
Do you have any projects or nothing?
We have a lot of projects and we have grants for all of them.
Um, you know, our, we feel our sewer plant's gonna be expensive and tie us up for a few years. Uh, the, the South Street Sidewalk, you know, should be this summer if we can get a contractor.
We just applied for a second grant for that.
Yeah.
We have grants for our water for assessments.
Yeah.
Highway.
Paving will be tough this year, but, uh, you know, we're, we're not gonna get a, a state grant for that.
No, you're not.
We got it last year, so that will be expensive this year, paving.
I'm just concerned that where Proctor's going, that's what I'm asking. Because all, all the other towns, I'm not here to insult you, but other towns are expanding, other towns are moving ahead. I mean, I've been on, Ludlow is really moving ahead and.
You can't compare Ludlow to Proctor, John.
They use all things, people just take these grants. Royal City got some grants.
John, what does Rutland City and what does Ludlow and what does West Rutland and what does Manchester and all those places have that we don't have?
Well, I'm just saying, they.
What do they have?
They're fixing all structures and stuff.
But what do they have that we don't have?
Well, we need a lot of sidewalks and a lot of it needs to be done.
They have stores, they have businesses, they have tourists, they have everything.
But we don't have nothing, that's what I'm saying.
I know, we don't, we don't have a mountain to ski on, we don't have stores to shop in.
You're not gonna get it if you don't start.
Oh.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Uh, any other new or old business? Hearing none. I think we can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.